Call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Board member Dyer.
Yes.
Board member Goodhue.
Here.
Chair Croman.
Here.
Board member Gualtieri.
Here.
And board member Palmer.
Yes.
Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any public appearances? Any public appearances prior to getting into the agenda items? Okay, hearing none. Any announcements? Okay, hearing no announcements, we'll start with the consent agenda. So we have the minutes from the October and September and other months' meetings. Do we have any review or discussion of those minutes? Will this catch us all the way up, Shelby, if we do these?
It absolutely will.
Okay.
Well, since I'm going to abstain on three of them, I don't think I should make a motion, but hopefully someone else will.
I'd actually love to make a point. After review of clerk rules, I made a mistake, and you do not have to be present at the meeting to approve the minutes.
Oh, is that...
That was my mistake.
No, I thought so too.
Never have to do that again.
Okay. Well, unless no one has an objection, I move the approval of the minutes for October 16, 2023, September 18, 2023, April 15, 2024, and May 20, and December 16, so we're all caught up. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Board member Dyer.
Yes.
Board member Goodhue.
Yes.
Chair Croman.
Yes.
Board member Gualtieri.
Yes.
And board member Palmer.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll transition to the orders of business where we have four public hearings on the DACA. So let's start with the first, Johnson.
I have to recuse myself, so I will step outside.
Thank you. Yeah, just so the public knows, we have two recusals, one on this one and one on a future one. But we still have enough members to vote.
Just one moment.
IT, are you able to display my screen? Okay, I'll start us off with Design Study 24276, Johnson. This is the historic La Subuelas property, a large, nearly 12,000-square-foot lot located at the northwest corner of San Carlos and Santa Lucia or Lucia. I'm not sure the best way to say it, Lucia.
It's not Italian, so it's Lucia.
Lucia. In 1923, Michael J. Murphy developed the property, and then in 1928, there was a substantial addition, an enlargement of the house. The property has been found significant under Criterion 3, California Register Criterion 3, because it embodies the distinctive characteristics of the Spanish eclectic style. So this property is listed on our historic inventory. The project's scope involves a new 323-square-foot detached garage. The site plan is oriented north, so you can see kind of the L-shaped home with the new garage to the north. The project also involves site improvements and landscaping, specifically the removal of 970 square feet of site coverage, a new 210-square-foot natural turf grass area in the north courtyard, a new stone-clad 22-square-foot garden wall in the courtyard, and then a new 30-square-foot walkway from the new garage to the house. The new garage will be set back over 52 feet from that east property line from San Carlos, and then three feet from the north property line, which is the minimum setback. The garage will feature a hipped roof at 13 feet tall, four and a half inches, and paneled wood carriage-style garage doors with an overhanging trellis there on the east and south elevations. The garage will feature stucco, just like the house, but it will be smoother than the trowel-finished stucco on the house. Similarly, it will feature a mission clay tile roof, just like the house, but it will be a slightly differentiated style, as the board knows. But anyone listening, additions on historic properties should certainly be compatible, but slightly differentiated, because you don't want to kind of match the historic exactly, so no one would know when it was, that it's actually a contemporary addition to the property. As I mentioned, the house was first built in 1923, significantly enlarged in 1928, so that is the period of significance that we're working with. And the informal landscape setting of the house and grounds has been identified as a character-defining feature. However, of the site coverage features that this applicant is proposing to remove, none of them are historic. That includes just some stones, concrete pavers, gravel, flagstone pavers, and loose river rock gravel. There are 10 Secretary of the Interior standards for treatment of historic properties, and we're using the standards for rehabilitation here, as we often do. 10 standards listed on the left. And we did send this out to our third-party independent architectural historian, who found the project consistent with standards 1, 2, 9, and 10. And the rest of the standards were found not applicable. Like, for example, there's no chemical treatments proposed, no archaeological resources, those kinds of things. So looking at standards 1, 2, 9, and 10, the project is consistent, as designed, as proposed, with no changes requested from the consultant or from staff. And I'll just go through the applicable standards quickly. So standard 1, and I'm not going to read word for word the standard, but simply the analysis. This property will continue to be a single-family residence, so there's no change in use to be concerned about. Standard 2 talks about retaining the historic character of the property. And as I mentioned, the site coverage features that are going to be removed are not historic themselves. And even the location where the garage is proposed formerly accommodated a large, nonhistoric carport. That carport was extant between 1957 and 2017, and then was demolished. So the new garage that we're evaluating today is sited six feet away from the first story of the house, and then closer, three feet nine inches from the overhanging second story of the house. So while it is close, it's further than what the carport that was there before. And the consultant and staff found that the northwest corner of the lot is not particularly significant space that characterizes the property, and so no changes, and there will be no changes to distinctive materials or features. Here are a couple of old photographs of that prior, nonhistoric carport that was demolished. And the story poles for what we're considering today. The image on the left is looking west, and then image on the right kind of looking southwest. Standard 9 talks about, you know, the importance of not destroying historic materials, et cetera, and of course, the importance of differentiation and compatibility. So as I already said, the stucco and the tile of the new garage will be compatible yet differentiated, and it will be set back from the two-story house. It'll be one-story, so it will be subordinate in scale and massing. And then the landscape and hardscape features, unfortunately, we don't have original plans that tell us what landscaping and site features there were, but it's visible that there have been changes over the years. So we won't be losing anything original, and what's proposed is compatible. And then lastly, standard 10, you know, if you were to remove the work in the future, the historic property wouldn't be, would not be impaired. And the finding is that the new garage is not going to be attached to the house. If removed in the future, it will not affect the house. Likewise, the hardscape features, if they're removed, the house and the grounds will not be impaired. So the staff recommendation is to adopt a determination of consistency with the standards for the project as proposed. Happy to answer questions, and we have a representative for the applicant here with us this evening.
Okay. We'll open it up to the public first and maybe hear from the applicant's representative.
Not required, but you're welcome to speak.
Sorry. My name is Chris Bocca, I'm with Dyer Architecture. Since Eric had to recuse himself, I'm here representing him. So I don't have a lot to add, but maybe just go over a couple of points, additional points, or reiterate some points. But so the existing, that the garage is proposed to be set back in the far corner of the property, and the reason for that is to to make sure that the garage is subordinate to the main residence, but also, setting it back also hides it from public view. So it's, since San Carlos sits down below the property level a little bit, it hides the view, the fence hides the view a little bit. Also, as noted, it was, it's proposed in the same location as a previously existing carport, but there was also a previously approved application for a two-car garage in the similar location that was never built. For the exterior materials, we wanted to make sure that the new garage is consistent with the main residence, but yet differentiated. So a couple of examples would be the roof tile. We're proposing a two-piece cap-and-pan clay tile roof. Portions of the existing house have the same thing, but it's kind of your standard red clay tile color, so we're proposing slightly different color and lay, but similar material. And exterior plaster, we're proposing an integral, it'll be a similar color as the main house to keep it consistent, but we're proposing a smooth integral color stucco that is different from the painted, trowel-finished stucco. And I think that's just about it, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that come up.
Any questions?
No.
I have a question on the spatial relationship between the proposed addition and the main house. It's six feet from the main house, except for on the upper elevation where it's only three feet. Is that correct? Is that, that's the pergola or the little addition on there, right? Is what's getting that close?
So in that location, the upper portion of the main house projects farther than the lower portion. So basically, the side of the garage is six feet from the lower portion, but the roof actually slopes up before that, the upper lip of the upper level. But it's as close as the three feet, four inches, I believe.
And the three feet is the minimum distance?
Three feet is the minimum north side setback, so the distance between the garage and that north fence. There isn't like a zoning minimum distance for how close the garage could go to the historic house.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Thanks very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll open up to the, we'll close it to the general public, and we'll open up to the board for comment. Any comments?
I don't have any. I think it meets the Secretary's standards, and they've done a good job. And it was a pleasure to see the completed project today. Years ago, when we went, before it was remodeled and rehabilitated, it needed some TLC, and it's obviously had that. So I'm in full support of the garage.
Yeah, I think it's certainly without, it's not within view of any of the streets. It serves a very good function, and it was replacing something that was, that was there before that was needed. And, you know, it looks fine to me.
Okay.
Isn't that all the requirements it seems like to me?
Great. All right, do we have a motion?
Well, I move that we approve DS 24276 and move forward with your recommendation for approval.
Second.
Do you want to vote, Shelby? Yeah.
Board member Goodhue. Board member Goodhue.
Yes.
Board member Croman.
Yes.
Board member Gualtieri.
Yes.
And board member Palmer.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just in the hall, yeah.
Plug this ears.
Well, they sometimes have the close circuit TV on, which is nice, but they don't now.
Can we have one other board member that's been recused for this one?
Is that on this one, or is this on Casio?
It was the second one.
It's, you're not recused on this one. This would be on our floor.
Okay. Good afternoon, board members. Today, we'll be looking at DS 24202 Shearer. Okay. This is the historic Thien's House at the southwest corner of Lincoln and 10th Avenue. It was constructed for Thomas Thien's in 1931 and found to be significant under criteria number three, because it embodies a distinctive characteristic, that specifically being the Tudor revival style. And it was added to the historic inventory November of 2024. A little bit of background, here are the character-defining features as found in the Phase 2 report by MEG. The regular plan enassing, the complex roof system, exterior siding of stucco, the false timbers, this exposed brick chimney with the T on it. The list is here, if you'd like to go back to it again. For the Secretary's standards, as you've seen this slide before, there's the 10 on the left there, and on the right are the ones that it is consistent with and the ones that are not applicable. It is consistent with 1, 2, and 9, and 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10 are not applicable. So for the description, for the north side elevation, as we saw on our tour today, it is just this kitchen window. The plan is to remove the planter and shutters and the window itself that are nonoriginal and replace them with a vertical-oriented window that is more aligned with what the original windows are. As you can see in the bottom left, I've included a screenshot of the blueprints of the project, of the house, showing what the original kitchen window looked like. As discussed, these will be aluminum clad instead of solid wood, which the original windows would be solid wood, so it differentiates them. There's no pretending to be historic when they're not. Next, we'll look at the south elevation. This would be the two windows and a door that are going to be replaced with four fixed, vertical-oriented windows. Again, aluminum clad, so that there's no, they're differentiated from the historic windows without, while still matching, without being architecturally inconsistent. That's the word I was looking for. The west portion is these two windows being replaced with one fixed and one casement window. Same setup, vertical-oriented, aluminum clad, all found to be consistent with architectural style. And finally, the east elevation, these three windows that we saw that were kind of on the porch at the back of the deck are going to be replaced with two vertical-oriented windows, one fixed and one casement. All aluminum clad, all consistent and determined to be acceptable by the Secretary of Interior Standards, per our historic consultant. And with that, I recommend to adopt a resolution for a determination of consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards. I'm here if you have any questions, and we have the applicant here for a presentation.
Okay. With applicant, applicant's representative, Kira.
Sure.
Super.
Patrick Lee Bastner, architect. Just real brief, basically, there's only maybe two windows on the whole house that are original. The windows have been replaced with vinyl windows. There was a big addition on the south side there that was even completely different from the original. So my client looked for a kitchen renovation, looking to bring the windows back into a stylistic design that matches the original a little more closely. So basic, kind of a real basic, kind of just trying to give her more light in the kitchen. And if any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for the...
I have a question.
Sure.
Were the window boxes original or added?
Um, we believe they were original.
We're not sure.
But we're not sure. And obviously, the window box at the kitchen window is on the second floor and pretty much impossible to maintain as a flower bed. So it's just, you know, some of it, have to get a ladder up, and so, yes, impractical.
I could find one in the kitchen, kind of, hang out the screen and lean way out. It's a little kind of impossible, but anyway, we'll do something that's unimpressive.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll bring it back to the board. Any discussion amongst the board? Okay.
Just as the first one, this one also meets the standards, and I think it will be an improvement with removing these vinyl windows. So I would be in favor of the project.
Yeah, and I think the differentiation is pretty clear when you're dealing with aluminum-clad windows versus the original wood, even if they're in similar configuration. And the fact that that was already a vinyl window and not an original form, replacing it with something that's new is just consistent with that and differentiates it from the historic parts of the house. So
Okay.
Everything else is on the other side, so I think it's a
Do we have a motion?
...the requirements.
Perfect. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to make a determination of consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards for this project, DS 24202.
I'll second it.
Okay. Can we have a vote, please?
Board member Dyer.
Yes.
Board member Goodhue.
Yes.
Chair Croman.
Yes.
Board member Gualtieri.
Yes.
And board member Palmer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
All right, moving right along to Design Study 23, 343 Griney. The Luis P. Murphy House is located at the northeast corner of Camino Real and 12th. It's a 7,000-square-foot lot. The home was built in 1931. It was found significant under California Register Criterion 3 as a good example of the Cape Cod colonial, like, combination Cape Cod colonial revival style. It is listed on our historic inventory. So in addition to the architectural style, it's significant as a design of Laura Wasoon Maxwell, a California watercolorist, who also designed this home. These are the character-defining features. The period of significance is 1931, the date of the home's construction. It's one and a half stories, rectangular plan with a steep gable roof, wood shingle walls, interior brick chimney, symmetrical design, six-over-six double-hung wood windows, and the wood shutters with the pine tree motif, and a central entry with that portico and built-in benches flanking the entrance, and then a denticular course under the cornice. And that is kind of like the wood molding that looks like teeth. The project's scope is to demolish a nonhistoric 50-square-foot laundry room addition, shown in the upper-right image there with the arrow, and then construct a new 126-square-foot dressing room, bathroom addition, that will be finished with board and batten siding. You can see the story poles there, and then the elevations below, existing on the left, proposed on the right. Additionally, the project involves altering the fenestration pattern on the north side of the house on an addition. So it's kind of tough to get the full view of the house here, but you can see what you're looking at in the photo is an addition. The applicant is proposing to slightly change the location, size, and configuration of these two window openings containing three windows. So the configuration will change from double-hung to casement style. The divided light pattern will change from four over four to two over two. And it'll, the, the design will be made more symmetrical. And here you can see those changes. For the standards analysis, it was found consistent with 1, 2, 9, and 10. The other standards were found not applicable, and the consultant and staff has found the project consistent with the standards as proposed, with no changes recommended. The first standard, as before, the property will continue to be used as a single-family residence. This is the view from 12th Street looking north because of some vegetation and a detached garage. Depending on the angle you're standing, the story poles, you know, can be considered minimally visible, but if you step around the tree and the bushes, it'll be more, it would be more visible. Standard 2, retaining the historic character of the property. As I've said, the new addition on the rear elevation, the east elevation, would be in an area already disturbed by the nonhistoric laundry room addition. And then for the windows, they're also going on a nonoriginal portion of the house. The proposed new windows will be differentiated from the old in terms of window size. Configuration will be changing, and that divided light pattern will be different. So it will be clear that they are nonoriginal windows, but they'll still be compatible with, with the historic windows. And the addition will feature board and batten to differentiate it from the wood shingle house. Standard 10, if the bathroom addition is removed in the future or the new window openings, it would not impair the essential form and integrity of the historic house. So that's it for the standards analysis, and the staff recommendation is to issue a determination, determination of consistency for the project as it designed.
Okay, thank you. We have the owner's representative?
We do.
Afternoon, board members. Thanks for having me. I'm Harlan Bradley. I own Masterwork Builders in Carmel, and I'm the builder and the representative for Mark Rainey and Charlotte Boyle and Peter, who are here with me today. Thanks, Catherine, for the presentation. I'm very, very excited for this project. I actually lived in this home with my family for just about five years, ways back. So it's a project... so it's a project that's near and dear to me. Really looking forward to it and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions for the owner's representative? I do have one question if nobody else does. I am a little bit concerned, I think that addition is very visible from the street, not that it's a horrible thing, but I think the board and batten is really going to stick out, especially as a different color. Did you consider doing a different type of shingling or anything like that to the addition? Had you ever thought of that, or?
We were looking for something that was compatible but differentiated. Board and bat is, you know, a very popular historic finish, so it was the first one that came to mind, but we're receptive. If you have a suggestion, we'd defer to you guys if you think there's a better finish for that, would definitely be open to the consideration.
Chair Cromer, you mentioned color, so my understanding was it's not going to be painted, or is it going to be painted?
No, it's going to be natural. We propose natural cedar to match the cedar shingles.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was a property, I lived in Capitola for many years, and there was a property on my street that was an 1890s, kind of a Victorian, and what they did in that particular addition, they added a small bathroom, and all they did was change the size of the shingles. And I thought, you could tell it if you look at it, but it's much less of an intrusion, and I didn't know if you and the owners had considered that. I think that's acceptable also, as far as I know. Eric, do you have an opinion on that?
I think going with the natural cedar, that will eventually age out to be similar to the shingles, should be satisfactory. I wouldn't, I think it's nice not to have it painted. Shingles of a different style possibly could work as well, as long as they're differentiated, but in a way, it's obvious, I mean, in a way, I like the fact that it's so clear that it's not part of the original.
I tend to agree with the shingle selection, though. I looked at it, and I, first of all, I saw that, you know, on plans that it was going to be boarding that, I thought, well, I guess, but I didn't think anymore about it after that. Good point.
Yeah, to be honest, I didn't realize that the differentiation could be that subtle, so.
We've improved that before here as well.
And isn't it also in the eyes, the way I've read it in the past, is that if an architectural historian were to walk past it, they could tell, or an architect? And the public, I'm not, I don't know if they are, that subtlety would be there, but it seems to me that it could work just as easily and be less obtrusive.
I think we'd be very receptive, yeah.
Okay, super. Any other discussion?
Thank you for the suggestion.
Yeah, any other discussion?
I think the shingles would look nicer also.
Okay. Esther, you want to do a motion with the shingle proviser?
Obviously, it's okay. Yes, I move that we, through DS 24343, and we go along with the last request.
I guess.
Second.
Well, Hannah, are we gonna, are we gonna recommend the shingling or not? Because the staff says do as is, we're saying we think that it might be...
I don't mean to interrupt, can we be mindful to open for public comment after the applicant has a chance to speak?
Oh, sure, absolutely, thank you for the reminder, yeah. Okay, so before we vote.
I was just gonna say, what is, I'm curious what the existing exposure of the shingles are and what would be the appropriate difference between those dimensions?
Yeah.
I think if it's only, you know, a half inch, it's not going to do the trick.
Yeah.
I think that the existing are five, and I think the next, you know, nominal difference would probably be seven. That would be a two inch difference.
Yeah, that would be very noticeable, I mean, that would differentiate it well, I think. Yep, at this point, do we have any comment from the public? Thanks, Sheldon.
Could I also make a point? I would, in, I read through the form that was filled in by Kent Seavey. I don't see a date on it, but it's the original DPR primary record form, and in his description and his period of significance, Mr. Seavey really basically focused on Laura Maxwell, and there wasn't much mention of William Maxwell until we got to the Phase Two report that was done by our historic consultant. And in her report, Ms. Clovis talks about William Maxwell and the fact that he was on the city council. Well, in fact, he was on, he was the president of the Board of Trustees in the early 1920s, in 1922, before Carmel took the position of having a mayor and a city council. So Mr. Maxwell, as important as he was to our history, in 1922 was the president, not the mayor, of the board, and not until five years or six years later did they establish the new, the new name-calling, if you will. So I think it's not a major point of anything, but I just thought, Seavey didn't discuss it, but I think if we're going to include the Phase Two report, we should have, we should have the record straight that Maxwell was the president of the board.
Great. You're taking that as a note, Catherine?
Board member Goodhue, would you mind pulling your microphone down? We had trouble hearing you earlier.
It's not on?
Or it's on, just pulling it down.
Oh, down, okay.
Thank you.
Want to try it again with the shingle proviser?
I move that we accept the staff's recommendation for DS 2434, but that we go to shingles instead of board and bat.
And maybe we even delineate that it's a seven inch shingle?
Well, if we want, if we've decided, if, you know, if that's been decided, yeah, seven inch shingle.
Second.
Okay.
Board member Dyer.
Yes.
Board member Goodhue.
Yes.
Chair Cromer.
Yes.
Board member Gualtieri.
Yes.
And board member Palmer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we do ask that board member Goodhue recuse yourself of this item.
Tonight, I recuse myself.
So I have to go?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be outside.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll call you back for the final part, yeah.
After the little call.
Hello again, board members. For this project, we're looking at DS 24300 Casanova All the Way LLC. Some background on the project, this is the Connolly Search House. It's at the northeast corner of Casanova Street and 13th Avenue. It was constructed for, or by Mary Connolly in 1908, and later Fred Willis Search moved in in 1914 and lived there until, I believe, 1932. It's significant under two criteria, one, well, criteria two and three. The first of those two is that it's associated with Frederick William Search, or Willis Search, who is in the historic context statement as a significant person in Carmel history, and for Criterion Three, for its embodiment of a distinct characteristic, specifically Carmel American four-square homes. It was added to the inventory on June 2002. The character defining features, one and a half story massing, the wood shingle exterior walls, medium pitched hipped roof with hipped dormers, exposed brick chimney, casement windows, and the bow windows on the south elevation. The Secretary of Standards are on the left. On the right has a summary of the standards that are applicable and the consistency of this project with said standards. The project has been found to be consistent with standard 1 to 9 and 10, and the rest are not applicable to this project. For project description, as you can see, these are the two site plans where they show in red the portions of the home that are proposed to be demolished, and in blue the proposed additions. So at the deck, at the northwest portion of the home, the staircase and the railing guardrail right there are proposed to be demolished to make the stairs wrap around the rear deck altogether. And on the northeast portion of the home, the walls of the existing restroom are going to be demolished in order to expand it for a 57 square foot addition with a landing and stairs to get into said addition. Additionally, on the south portion of the home, which is the entrance, the staircase is going to be expanded with the existing railings and half walls removed in order to expand the stairs to the full width of 13 feet at the entrance. So we'll go elevation by elevation. You can see on the top is existing and the bottom is proposed. Here is the south elevation. They're going to be demolishing the railing and the half wall and expand the staircase as discussed, and put up railings that are, you can see through. I included a snippet from the Phase Two report where the consultant mentions that ideally, for portions of a historic home, we'd want to bring the feature back to its original design, but as there's no documentation or physical evidence of what that was, having something that's historically compatible will suffice, and it's the next best option. For the east elevation, this is where we'll see the proposed addition at the rear. As you can see, as the horizontal siding is different than the shingles, that's the addition, and it's been differentiated. The expansion there is at the right side of these elevations that you're viewing. There's the landing with the rail and stairs, the relocation slash new door and windows. And again, another snippet from the Phase Two report showing that these modifications are on nonhistoric portions of the homes and won't affect the historic portions of the home if added or if removed at a future date. Next, we'll look at the east, I got two east elevations for you. Nope, that's the north elevation. Pardon the typo on the slides. This is the north elevation where we're looking at the staircase that would be expanded, so it wraps around to the west side, and new doors and windows at the rear, and the deck would be modified slightly. Again, the staircase themselves is a nonhistoric portion and won't have any effect on historic portions of the home and meet all the Secretary of Standards. With that, staff recommends adopting a resolution to issue a determination of consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards for the addition and modification. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, we have the owner's representative?
My name's David Solomon. I'm the architect and also related to the owner of the project. So our designs are intended, anything that's touching the existing building, to sort of reduce the amount of interventions that have been made, so the balustrades on the stairs specifically, which were made in 2011, to return to a more historic, historically accurate idiom. And then the addition is all on the new part of the building.
Great. Any questions?
So the main addition, I'm just curious, that was done in 2011?
That was in, I think, 2011, or maybe shortly before then.
Okay, thank you.
The work that was done in 2010, I believe that was permitted in 2011, was constructed, was actually reviewed and approved by the Historic Resource Board here.
Think we were on good?
I don't know.
I don't know.
And the exterior siding will match the current addition?
The current addition, yeah, the new addition will match the current addition.
Okay. Any other questions?
And what is the addition going to be? What room in the house?
It's expanding the bathroom, the primary bathroom, and closet.
That's right, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Any comments from the public? Hearing none? Do we have a motion?
Well, I just wanted to add that I was interested in the fact that the professor, Ms. Professor Search, had given more than 7,000 lectures during his career. Can you imagine? According to Meg Clovis's evaluation, I just find that incredible, that someone could give that many talks. That's quite a few. We should give him a plaque just for that. So.
Any other discussion amongst the board?
And I guess at the site, they mentioned, obviously, the gas meter's kind of in the way of doing some construction, but I think as long as the stairway, the new stairway that's on the nonhistoric portion doesn't go past the plane of the historic part of the building on that side, it should be fine. Either way, believe it or not.
Okay, we have a nomination or proposal, sorry.
Well, I was just thinking that this is such an early vernacular building, and it reminded me of the one that came a few months ago that we, was also like a four-square design of the corner of Lincoln and 8th, and we felt that one had been too modified, they'd taken the wraparound porch from it and all. So this is a good, a good way to keep this particular style evident for people who want to take walks and look at it, so I'm glad that it's being kept.
Kathy, you want to make a nomination on this one?
Sure, I'll move that we accept DS 24300, consideration of a determination of consistency as submitted.
Okay, I'll second.
Board member Dyer.
Yes.
Chair Cromer.
Yes.
Board member Gualtieri.
Yes.
And board member Palmer.
Yes.
Super.
Motion passes.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we have the director's report.
Is there future agenda items?
There is the one letter, right? Do we want to address that now, or do we want to address that after the director's report?
Director's report first, so I guess I'll, it's a little bit bittersweet, but as you may know, Marnie is stepping into the all-important housing planner role, very important role. You've been in her capable hands for years, but I'm going to do my best as staff liaison to the HRB going forward, so.
Well, I just will say, Catherine, we're really happy to have you, you've been tremendous going forward, but Marnie, we will...
Miss you.
I think I speak for everybody when we say you have just been a great hand of guiding us and reeling us back when we need to be reeled back, and just being a really, really good mentor and a leader for us, so we really appreciate you.
I totally agree.
She promised me she'd stay on a little bit longer to guide me, so thank you.
You can still ask for advice, hopefully.
Yeah, she sits next to me, and so, I have her ear. And then there's a few upcoming meetings this week. Tomorrow, there is a housing, a special planning commission meeting, where they'll be discussing the housing element. So if you miss Marnie, show up to her meeting tomorrow. That'll be tomorrow evening here in Chambers. And then on Thursday, the city council has their strategic priorities meeting, and that is a day meeting. I believe it starts at 10, like 10 to 3. That's it for me.
Great.
Did we have, was there a place on the agenda when we had board members say something? I don't remember if that was on.
It's announcements, and that's actually closer to the beginning of the meeting, but why don't we...
Okay.
You brought a brochure to talk about, is that right?
I didn't bring it with me. Marnie, you didn't bring it, did you, the brochure that I gave you that was an old...
Would you like me to go grab it?
I can work it.
I'll grab it, I know where it is.
Okay, I want, I'm sorry, I didn't even bring my, I have two copies of this brochure that was put out for the HRB that would really, I'd like us to consider maybe getting reprinted. But before Catherine gets back, I have to tell you, this material I have are excerpts this doc, this material I have are excerpts from the minutes of the city council meetings that one of our former chairman, Ralph Tober, who sadly passed away in, I don't remember what year. He was a very fine researcher. And he put together the excerpts from all the council meetings from 1916 to 1940. And so I've used this for my books. As you can imagine, that was very helpful. But I wanted to just put into, in Ralph's memory, something he wrote from, let me get my glasses on while you're getting your thing together. "August the 5th, 1924, communication from Mr. Hugh Comstock." So we have communications going back that far. Signed by seven other property owners in his neighborhood, which we know is up on Taurus, was read to the council requesting, oh, the board, pardon me, requesting the board to consider and act upon the nuisance from certain piles of manure in the locality of their property. So you see, we, they were really into a lot of deep things in those days.
Deep doo-doo.
What? You got it. Do we know what kind of manure it was?
We don't have any idea. But that's a silly thing. But this, this has been a valuable document to me because it does show the changes. Like, I found just by accident that Mr. Maxwell, who was on the, on our agenda today, Mr. and Mrs. Maxwell's house, that that's where it said that he was the first president of the, not the first president, but the, in 1922 was the president of the Board of Trustees. And I think we want to be careful that we don't call people mayors when they're presidents. So anyway, I just value this document, and it really helps me a lot when I'm doing my writing. So this brochure we're passing around was put out by the city, and it was very helpful. I shared it with Marnie, and I hope you've seen it, Catherine, too.
I'll take a look.
And maybe on a future meeting, we could have, talk about it. And if you made, you could flatten it out and make a copy of the front and back, and we could all have a copy to look at. But it, I thought it did a lot to, one of our jobs, one is part of our ordinance, is to educate people as to what the, the board does and also the programs that we emphasize. So this might be something that could be duplicated without costing too much.
Do you know when that was published?
I don't know anything about when it was published. No.
Useful information.
A lot of things were done during the centennial. Was that?
I think it was even before that, Esther, but I'm not positive. No.
Yeah, that's probably reviewed. The way anything of the, things in there have changed over time, but.
Yeah, we should review it, but I think it has.
Pretty good questions and answers.
Good questions for people who are just starting out.
Absolutely.
Well, we can definitely add that as a future agenda item if, if we'd like to.
If we could.
Yeah.
I would think it would be helpful. We don't have to add the manure completely.
No, maybe that stays off it.
Okay. Thank you.
So can the staff look at this and then make some recommendations?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Wanted to put it up on the screen, so anyone joining us electronic, they can see it.
That's great.
That's very good. It doesn't really say, just if you have questions, contact planning.
Okay, we, as we're looking at future agenda items, we do have a letter that was written to, that was asked to be read at the, this board meeting. Do you want to read it, or you want me to, or?
So we actually don't read submissions, but it is linked on the agenda for anyone to, to read themselves.
Okay, so everybody.
And we can discuss it.
Did everybody see this letter from?
I, I would like it to be put on a, a future agenda because I think it, not that we're going to change everything, but maybe we should look at it and discuss it.
And I would send it to Seth in Kent as well, if it's not already been sent.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we did discuss end dates extensively, but it wouldn't hurt to, to re-look it again.
My recollection was that we really didn't resolve it.
No, exactly. We did discuss it extensively. We just didn't, we kind of agreed to leave it where it was. So can we put that as a, as a future agenda item as well? Okay. Any other items that we'd like to put on the agenda or any other discussions? Okay, hearing none, then we'll adjourn. Thank everybody very much for their time and attention. Thank you, Chip.
Should we, should we sing a little goodbye song to Marnie?
I know. What's the opposite of happy birthday?
She's not going anywhere.
We're gonna miss you, Marnie.
I know, we will.
You're not getting it so easy, though. I have tons of minutes for you to sign.
Gotcha.
And I'll only run it a time after this, I promise.
Sounds good.